Well, those were the magic words I was supposed to say. And then I was supposed to see a black screen, which is there. So we're ready to go. Good evening and welcome to the Roseville School District Candidates Forum. My name is Susan Johnson and I am a member of the Roseville Area League of Women Voters. I am the moderator for this evening's program. I do not live in the school district of Roseville. The League welcomes everyone, the candidates, those watching live, as well as those who will be viewing on demand. This forum will last approximately an hour and a half. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer political organization for all genders. The League is organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage informed and active participation in government. This forum is part of our ongoing voter education effort to assist voters to make informed decisions at upcoming elections. This forum allows you an opportunity to hear candidates discuss important issues. We have a limited amount of time, so if your questions are not addressed, we encourage you to contact the candidates directly. We hope this program will assist you when you vote in the Roseville School District election. We never endorse candidates, but we are directly involved in shaping the important issues to keep our communities strong. If you are interested in learning how you can make a similar impact, please look at the League's information available on the Roseville League of Women Voters website. There is also information available on the state and national websites for the League of Women Voters. This forum is being broadcast in its entirety. It will be rebroadcast on the school district's YouTube channel, and it will be available on the Roseville League of Women Voters channel. Volunteers will be collecting written questions submitted by you throughout the program. Questions submitted in advance to the League will also be used. We ask that questions be addressed to all candidates. No personal or attacking questions will be asked. We ask the candidates answer the specific question that is asked. All questions become the property of the League of Women Voters. This year, there are three openings on the Roseville School District Board. Four candidates appear on the ballot. The names of the candidates are Manix Clark, Hayda Cleveland, Carl Crump, and Michelle Morse Went. To begin with, each candidate will have two minutes to give an opening statement. The speaking order was determined randomly before the forum began. The timekeepers are sitting in the front row. When there are thirty seconds left for your speaking time, the timekeeper will hold up a yellow card that says thirty seconds. When you see the red stop, please conclude your sentence and stop. I will enforce the time limits to make sure that each candidate has an equal amount of time to address the forum. I will ask questions in random order. At least I'll do the best I can. Each candidate is allowed one and a half minutes to respond. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes for closing statements. And my timekeepers, I forgot to ask you. We have four candidates. That's eight minutes when we have ten minutes left in the forum, or at seven twenty, about seven fifteen, actually. Give me a signal so that we have time for these closing statements. We will begin with the opening statements. You each have two minutes, and we will start with candidate Crump.
Good evening. My name is Carl Crump, and I'm running for the Roseville School Board. My concerns are the new sixty million dollar property tax levy. It's a lot of money. The schools bathroom problem. Let's make sure that boys are in the boys' bathroom, girls are in the girls' bathroom, and they're each playing their own sports as well. And artificial intelligence and sending kids to college. In regards to the safety and TICNA, or in regards to the levy, the sixty million dollar levy, that's over ten years, but that's six million dollars per year. The money's going to building, safety, and security, student learning, cybersecurity, infrastructure, and communication. Those are all good things, but it's still a lot of money. Sixty million dollars is a lot of money. I would encourage the citizens of Roseville to attend the community information meetings. There are two of them. One is on September thirtieth, and one is on October sixth. I would encourage you to attend and to ask questions. The high school also has a bathroom problem. In November of 2023, there was a meeting that was called a community meeting called by the high school, because there were three guns found on the property. What happened in the meeting was about a dozen students went to the microphone, one at a time, and they were complaining about the use of the bathrooms. They're afraid to use the bathrooms. I think we need to have some way to address the bathrooms. I haven't heard anything from November 2023. And I would also like to make sure that boys are using the boys' restroom, girls using the girls' restroom, and playing any appropriate sports. And I would also like to see the school take a lead.
Thank you. The next candidate to address is candidate Morse Went.
All right. Hello, I'm Michelle Morse Went, and I am very proud to be running for the Roseville Area School Board. My wife and I have two children in Roseville area schools. Our son is an eighth grader at Rams, and our daughter is a third grader at Brimhall. And I'm running for school board because I'm a teacher, and I think more teachers need to be involved in the decision-making process about education. I teach fourth grade in the neighboring Mounds U. school districts, and I went into education because I believe education to be the great equalizer, so that regardless of your background or identity, you should have a pathway to success. As a career educator, I know that all people want to be successful, and when they have the tools to do so, they will be. I've dedicated my adult life to this belief, and throughout my career, I have advocated for meeting the needs of all learners, and launched workshops and change in my district on teaching students with ADHD, ASD, anxiety, and dyslexia. I was an early and persistent advocate of science-based literacy instruction, and I am passionate about neurodivergence. Being a parent of a son with autism and a daughter who is hard of hearing and then, as a result, struggled to learn to read, has only strengthened my resolve and advocacy in those areas. Throughout my career, I've been lucky enough to be honored as a top eleven finalist for Minnesota Teacher of the Year in 2024, as the 2019 Rising Star in Economic Education Award winner awarded by the Minnesota Council on Economic Education, and as a TIES Exceptional Teacher Award winner in 2015. As a school board member, my priorities will be to trust and support teachers. I know that teachers are drawn to the field to make positive changes and have the unique set of skills to do just that. We must let the teachers teach and listen to what they need to meet the needs of our students. I will also support policies that equip all teachers and students to be successful. And finally, I will work in conjunction with my colleagues to ensure Roseville is financially secure and to be good stewards of our limited resources.
Thank you. Our next candidate will be candidate Manix Clark.
Thank you. My name is Manix Clark, and I'm honored to be running for reelection for the Roseville Area School Board. I've lived in the district for seventeen years. My wife and I have raised our son in all our public schools, and now he's an eleventh grader at Ross. I've worked at the University of Minnesota for the past twenty-five years, and since 2022, I've had the privilege of serving on the school board, since 2024, as treasurer. In that role, I've focused on fiscal responsibility, community engagement, and making sure resources are aligned with our district's strategic priorities. My passion is ensuring that every student has the support that they need to succeed, with a special focus on students receiving special education services, closing opportunity gaps and creating schools where all students feel a sense of belonging. I believe our board must be thoughtful, transparent, inclusive, and listening to families and staff and students as we make decisions that shape the future of our schools. I am committed to continuing to work this work and ask for your support as we strive to give every child the education that they deserve. Thank you.
And last of all, candidate Cleveland.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hayda Cleveland. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm honored to be here tonight as a candidate for Roseville Area School Board. And I'm running because I believe that every child deserves an environment where they feel seen, supported, and empowered to thrive. I'm a proud immigrant, a first-generation college graduate, and a mother of two neurodivergent children. My lived experience from being an English-language learner student at the age of twelve to earning a master's degree in public affairs and human rights from the Humphrey School has shaped my deep commitment to inclusive education. For over fifteen years, I've worked at the University of Minnesota, helping students, especially those of underrepresented communities, navigate complex systems and finding belonging in higher education. Since 2018, my family has called Roseville our home. It's here where we walked the journey of autism diagnosis for my children, therapy, and advocacy. And it's here where we've found educators who have uplifted my children and who have seen them for who they are, their strengths, not just their challenges. If elected, I will prioritize equity and inclusion for all students regardless of their race, ability, or background. Support for educators and students, especially in special education and mental health, and community-driven leadership that reflects the voices and values of Roseville families. I know what it feels like to be a student who doesn't fit the mold, and I know what it means to be a parent searching for answers. And I know what it's possible when we build a school that embraces every learner, and I hope that I can earn your vote. And because I have thirty seconds, I'm gonna say a little bit in Spanish. Hola soy Hayda Cleveland. Es un honor para mí ser candidata de la junta escolar de la Roseville. Soy una madre orgullosa de dos hijos con autismo. Soy inmigrante y soy la primera en mi familia de regalarme la universidad. Y espero contar con su voto en las próximas elecciones. Gracias.
Thank you. Now we will start with our questions. The first question, and I'm going to repeat each question twice, so please try and pay attention. I know when you're the fourth one answering the question, it's hard to remember, so if you want me to repeat the question, I will, but I will read it twice. School safety. School safety is perhaps one of the biggest questions on the minds of parents and students today. What will you do as a Roseville School Board member to enhance the safety of all students at all levels? And we will start with candidate Cleveland.
If you would. I had a feeling. School safety. I'm a parent of two children in elementary school in the district. That is top of mind for me. I think about that every morning when I drop by my children at home, at school. And it's an important topic, not just in schools, but really in all of our communities. I have reviewed some of the policies that we currently have in place in the Roseville School District, a two-pronged approach to safety, and the partnership that Roseville has had with the Violence Project. And that approach in preventing violence instead of being reactive to violence. I find that to be an approach that's really important. Traditional safety for our children is very important, and it's based and focused on supporting our students in the relationship that they have with administrators, with educators, with anyone in their schools' buildings, as well as supporting their mental health and making sure that students feel seen, supported, and they feel a sense of belonging at their schools. So they feel like they can ask for help in a time when they know that there's symptoms of their mental health instead of when they're in crisis mode. It's really important for us to be proactive in supporting some of those resources. I think as a school board, we are limited to what we can do, but we can work with folks from the state and legislation to make sure that our approach can support each other.
The next candidate for this question is candidate Morse Went.
Excellent. Okay. This is my lived experience as a teacher every day and has been my entire career. I have experienced lockdown drills and lockdowns. We have refined our safety protocols over the years, which are now uniform amongst most districts. The other day, one of my, actually, it came up today again. We talk about this as teachers. I work in a part that's very glass, and it brought up again, is that glass bulletproof? So this is definitely my lived experience. It's on my mind all the time. Every teacher knows exactly what they would do in every situation. Some things that are encouraging to me about Roseville is because every teacher also knows that there are the safety and security protocols and protections, but there's also the importance of building that belonging and inclusive community, because people who feel connected to their community don't hurt their community. And so that includes having multiple pathways for achievement, multiple ways to connect with others. And I gotta bring up our safety and security levy. Our things age. Our video cameras need replacing. Our cybersecurity channels need replacing. Our networks need replacing. Our entrance and exit protocols need replacing. So I'm excited to have this on the ballot also to address safety and security.
Next, we will have candidate Clark answer the question.
Thank you. Much like my two fellow folks that talked before me, safety and security is very important to me. I think our goal as a school board is to make sure that the district staff has the necessary means that they need to do in order to perform their job. Somebody alluded to, you know, we have our traditional safety model as well as the violence prevention. Both of those work in coordination to make sure that we are successful. We think of the high school has forty-seven doors, so we need to make sure that we have the ability to have, secure all those doors, make sure, you know, our team wants cameras to look at the doors. We have to make sure we have the responsibility to have the fiscal mind to have that. I also represent Roseville on the 916 School Board, and part of that, a few years ago, they had a thing with I Love You Guys Foundation, that they came and did some training that our staff was at as well. Our former superintendent, our associate superintendent Melissa Sonic, always talked about the Swiss cheese effect when it comes to security, that for us, it takes layers of multiple things that you have to do in order to do security. We can't just do one thing. We have to do multiple things to make sure that we have that. And one of those things is making sure that our teachers and our staff and people know our students, because then when they see some things that are out of order, the students feel comfortable enough in coming with them and sharing that information with them, and that's really partially how we do that. So I'm excited that that's to make sure that we can provide resources for our staff to be able to make sure our buildings are secure.
And last for this question would be candidate Crump.
Yes, thank you. The schools, and I'm sure they already do this, is they practice tornado drills and other drills as well. But then the thing at the top of everybody's mind is going to be school shootings and guns, and I know that there are plenty of different types of door jams and that that they make on the market. I know that the school does work right now with the Roseville Police Department, and I think it's a good idea to have a police presence at the school. In regards to the property tax levy, there is some safety concerns. That's why it's being brought, and I think it's good for people to go to the community information meetings so that they can ask questions on specifics. I also think that when it comes to safety, a lot of the kids at the meeting in November of 2023, they did not feel safe using the bathrooms. That's a problem, because some kids were going all day without going to the bathroom. You're not gonna learn if you don't go to the bathroom all day. I think that we need to have some monitoring going on of the bathrooms. I haven't heard of any solutions that have been presented, but maybe I just haven't heard.
Okay. Next question. School attendance. Students who are not present cannot learn. Only seventy-three point six percent of enrolled students in Roseville attend school regularly according to the Minnesota Department of Education. This is less than the average statewide. What can you do as a school board member to get children in Roseville to attend school? And we'll start with Mr. Crump.
Yes, thank you. For attendance, you're going to need to work with the parents, because that's where it's all going to be if they're, even if they're attending, but they don't want to learn and they don't want to be there, they're gonna be hanging out in the bathroom, skipping school. So you have to work with the parents. You have to convince the parents. You have to convince the students that they're going to need to come to school, and some of it's going to be what kind of programs, what kind of classes do they enjoy going to? But it's going to be a lot of working with the parents and with the kids, telling them, I know, telling the parents the benefits of going to class, but then also figuring out, what do the kids want to learn? Are there some classes that they would like to attend?
Okay. Mr. Clark, candidate Clark.
Sure. I'm gonna start by using that thing that takes a village. It's not just one thing that will get the students to come to school, but I think we need to make sure that we can support the district staff and having the resources to reach out to figure out why they're not coming to school. If you, one of our past board meetings, the former superintendent, who's now our associate, Mara Went, had mentioned about the things they were doing at Edgerton. You know, they were reaching out, they were calling the students when they weren't there, calling the parents. They were having the people who speak some of the languages that may not be English there and trying to connect with them. I think what we found out with some of the things with immigration, there's some reasons that students may be choosing not to come to school. How can we work through that and assist those students? In addition, I think we have to look at when they come to school, if people, they recognize the students, they say their name when they're there. That was one of the things that Mara talked about, was all the things they were doing at Edgerton, and they had increased their attendance, and how we can see when we have successful programs like that, how we can get it to the rest of our schools. But we have to make sure that they have the resources available to be able to do that. But clearly, and it's also a national problem. It's not just a problem at Roseville or really in the Twin Cities. That is a national problem that's happening. So I think we have to look at ways where we can maybe be leaders in that to get that attendance up. Thank you.
Okay. Candidate Cleveland.
Sure. I think the climate is really important and to understand the data behind on what's keeping students from attending the classrooms, right? So what is happening at the home? Are there other barriers that need to be addressed that go beyond the school, like housing insecurity, food insecurity, transportation issues that they might be having that prevent them? Or adult-like responsibilities that they might be supporting their families in the current, you know, climates or things that they have to do? So I think data-driven solutions need to be had, so we need to first find out what is keeping those students, that percentage that you mentioned, from not coming to the classroom? Because obviously, in order to be successful, you need to be present so that you can learn and continue to continue your education beyond high school. I also think expanding, supporting mental health resources is really important to help figure out what is the thought process, what is in the mind of the students, and what is preventing them from feeling comfortable, feeling like they belong in these spaces, and what's keeping them away if they're not feeling seen in that environment.
Candidate Michelle.
Yes. I want, I want to build a lot on what my co-candidate Cleveland said. We know that when students feel belonging, when they feel safe, when they feel connected to their teachers and their peers, they want to show up for them. So it's a lot about that inclusive and welcoming culture. Also, I'm pleased with all of the enrichment extracurriculars that Roseville offers, because the more involved students are, the more they want to participate and show up. And we do provide quite a few pathways to success. If you've never toured the high school, I highly recommend it. I did that recently, and I was blown away. And I think another thing, though, we have to look at, why are they not coming to school in addition to the mental health resources? Are they caring for a younger child because their parent has to work two jobs? Has, do they have a parent that has been detained by ICE, and now they have to take responsibility for their family members? And I think, finally, another plug for the levy, it, we have ninety-three, I think it is, home languages spoken in Roseville, and we need to be able to communicate with those families. And one of the things that the levy does is it improves our ability to communicate with all of those families in their home language and for them to communicate back with us and translate to English. So I think that's another key piece.
Okay. We'll go on to the next question. How about a big philosophical question now? Here we go. How do you define the purpose of public school education? And I will start with candidate Morse Went.
Excellent. Give me a second to sort through my what notes. You know, I don't know where it is. I'll just tell you, okay? I actually, this is, I wasn't gonna say this, but I'm actually descended. My family knows I'm really into ancestry. I'm actually descended from the proprietors of the first town that voted to use tax funds for the first public school in the United States. It was in Dedham, Massachusetts. And so I've thought about that a little bit, like, what was their purpose, right? To, in those early moments that were like, we need to use our tax dollars to pay for public education. And I think it's to prepare young people to be productive citizens at this time, college and career-ready. I doubt they would have used that language at that time, and to productively contribute to their communities. And so that is what I believe is the purpose of public education.
Candidate Cleveland.
Sure. Similarly, I think every individual, no matter who they are, where they come from, what their background is, their ability, has the right to an education. And public education is that access, right? Like, that is what within communities can provide children and students, young adults, the tools that they need to be successful in our global world, right? We are, we go beyond our community. We go beyond our cities. We go beyond, hopefully, our country. They visit other places. They learn about the world. And public education can breed that environment that gives them the tools to be successful, not just as citizens, but also in the workforce, whatever career they choose to do. And it can really help individuals develop to their fullest potential, whatever that potential that might be, and whatever purpose they find in life. So to me, public education gives folks that access by being local and being free and being available to the next generation.
Candidate Crump.
Yes, thank you. So what is the purpose of high school? I think the purpose of high school is to get a great general education. That means you're studying all kinds of general topics, like learn about history, learn about math, learn about science, learn about English, learn reading. You need to learn what a great country we live in. I also think that things are changing, and so I'm going to continue. I didn't, I didn't read fast enough on my opening statement, so this was the fourth part of my opening statement, and I'm gonna continue with that, because I think the high school needs to do this. Artificial intelligence is coming upon us quicker than what we realize, and I think the school should take the lead in having a community discussion about artificial intelligence and sending kids to college. Kids are gonna graduate a hundred thousand dollars in debt, and they're not going to be able to compete with artificial intelligence. The kids that go to a trade school are gonna be further ahead. So I just think we need to have a community discussion about artificial intelligence and continuing on with college and what that is gonna look like, because nobody really knows what it's gonna look like, so let's have a discussion about it.
Candidate Clark.
I should repeat the, repeat the question.
How do you define the purpose of public school education?
You know, I believe the purpose would be to serve all students. Hayda and I both work at the University of Minnesota, and I've always said, people choose to go to college or get chosen by a college. You don't choose to go to K-12. You know, the law requires us to send our kids to K-12, so we get kids from all backgrounds, all abilities, everything there. Public education should make sure that all those students have the opportunity to have a successful, opportunity to be successful after they leave there. We want them to be good people in our society. We want them to stay in Roseville. Part of the thing, I think, candidate Morse Went, mentioned about our career readiness, and at the high school, if you ever tour it, we have things there that, you know, if they take that commercial kitchen, they can go out and get a job right away if they choose not to go to college. So our goal, really, to me, would be to make sure that we provide, that public education continues to provide them the opportunity, so that it's really looked at from a global perspective, and that every student is being able to be served by that. And I'm proud that, you know, I was a public education candidate. I'm proud of what we do here in Roseville, and I think that our students get a good education, so I would hope that we can be leaders in the public education sector.
Okay. Next set of questions. Teachers. What are the greatest challenges for Roseville School District teachers, and what can you do as a school board member to assist them in meeting these challenges? And we will start with candidate Cleveland.
Great question. So part of my work at the University of Minnesota, a recent role that I took on, was to support staff and faculty belonging in community and well-being as well. So I'm really passionate about this question, because although students are important and they're at the center of So I'm really passionate about this question because although students are important and they're at the center of what we do every day as educators, we need the adults, the teachers in that classroom to also take care of their well-being and their mental health. We put a lot of stressors on our teachers. I, I truly do believe that teachers could run the world. The, the amount of skills that teachers have and what they do and the many hats that they wear, it's amazing to me. But that comes with a lot of pressure and a lot of burnout and a lot of stress. So one, I, I've talked about mental health in a lot of my answers, but I think supporting the well-being of our educators is really important and checking in on how they're doing as well, what they're doing for their joy and, and their well-being. Because if they can't show up fully, then our students suffer from that, right? So I, I want to name that. But at the same time, I think there's a lot of resources that we can provide additionally to our educators to support student needs, especially around special education and meeting the needs of those students very, you know, they vary from student to student. And so that means that our teachers and educators are having to pivot quite a bit. And so I think I, I would want to make sure that the tools are there for all, all educators.
Candidate Morris Went.
Okay. Can you repeat the question? I want to make sure.
Sure. What are the greatest challenges for Roseville School District teachers? And what can you do as a school board member to assist them in meeting these challenges?
Okay, so definitely in talking to teachers, it's burnout. It's for special education teachers, it's caseloads, it's not having the funds to meet the mandated needs that come from the state. And I will always be a major proponent of teachers, like that's kind of my life's work. So, and teacher efficacy is the number one indicator of student achievement. It's the biggest correlation to student achievement. There's a researcher named John Hattie that examines all kinds of public education research. And teacher efficacy is the number one correlated factor in student achievement. And so creating a culture that supports teachers, that trusts teachers, that protects teachers, that keeps teachers from having to be distracted from various culture wars and such, that we trust our teachers to do the job, that they have the unique set of skills to do. My, my own principle says culture is everything. Some people say it's the most important thing, it is everything. So treating our teachers with dignity and then making sure that they have competitive pay and benefits and things like that to support them is also important.
Candidate Clark.
Sure, I would think one of the things to do, one of the reasons I ran for school board was the support that my son received from the teachers. Because I think that classroom teacher at the elementary level and then when you enter to secondary level are, are very critical for that. And we continue to pride in professional develop, development, to make sure the things that they see in the classroom that they're prepared to, to do that. Make sure that we listen to them. Sometimes it's just of listening as, to them as a group, some mentorship. Because part of the thing is, if we can keep good teachers and keep them there with all, some of the things that candidate Morris Went mentioned, then they will stay in our district and they will be able to nurture new teachers to come in our district. We want to be a, a destination district that teachers would like to come to. I think if we have affinity groups, we may have teachers of, of color from underrepresented groups. We want them to stay there because we want our students to be able to see people who look like them. So what can we do to make sure that we teach them there, keep them there, as well as just provide the resources? But can't provide, solve all the problems. A lot of times I think we put a lot on the teachers and thinking they can solve everything. But what can others take for them so they can spend the time teaching the students? We have them do a lot, whether they're greeting students off the bus and they're, they're still in a lot of different things. And sometimes we just need them to have other times too and to take care of themselves as well. So whatever we can do to support that is what I would say.
Candidate Crump.
Yes, thank you. So how do we help teachers? I think probably their number one concern would be disruptions with students who are basically causing trouble in class. Students that don't want to be there, the students that are skipping class. I'm guessing that's probably the number one complaint that teachers would have, is how do you handle that? What do you do with that? So a lot of that gets back to how do we address attendance? How do we make students want to come to class? Because if they don't want to be there, they're either going to be skipping or they're going to be causing trouble. I don't know that that should be something that the teachers need to be handling. We're, we're going to need to handle that probably with, with the administration and that kind of stuff. I would, I would suggest that, you know, if you have a, if you have some student who is just causing trouble in the class, none of the other students are learning either. And so maybe we take some of that sixty million dollar property tax levy, add a few teachers that can help with, that can help with some of the disruptions in class. And maybe we don't need to take, maybe we don't need to use all of that sixty million dollars on what is listed.
Okay, next question. What background and expertise do you have in working with budgets and fiscal policy? How would you seek answers to budget questions? I'll repeat that. With what background and expertise do you have in working with budgets and fiscal policy? How would you seek answers to budget questions? And I'll start with candidate Clark.
Sure. I will start with my day job. Part of my day job, I oversee the housing operations at the University of Minnesota. So I'm responsible for a seventy-five million dollar budget on my portion of, of that and manage that. And managed over twenty different budget lines with several staff reporting to me that take care of those budgets as well. So I feel fairly confident in asking the right questions in order to be able for someone to be successful. One of the things when I ran for the board the first time, I talked about fiscal responsibility. And I joined the board, looked at that on the finance committee. In addition now, I'm the treasurer. I meet with our director of business operations quarterly to talk about the budget. K to twelve budget is much different than higher, a higher education budget. But I feel real comfortable in working with budgets and working with finances. It's very different. And one of the things that you will learn, it seems very easy, but there's a lot of things with school districts money that you have to spend certain things, on certain things. You can't dispense it how you want to on everything. So I think our team does a very good job in order to do that. So I feel pretty comfortable where, where budget where we're at. Other districts around us, you may be seeing, they may be in some, cutting and doing some things financially. We're in pretty good things that we have planned ahead. So I feel good where we're at with our budget and with my ability of managing budgets.
Candidate Crump.
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm an accountant and I have an MBA from University of Minnesota Carlson School. So in order to, so I work with financials all day, every day. If you find a variance, you ask questions about it. You go to the person responsible and you ask what happened? There's usually some kind of a story. And once you find out what the story is, you ask, how are you going to, how are you going to either solve the problem? Or do we need to increase the budget? Or what do we need to do to, or why, why did you miss the budget in the first place? What's kind of, what's causing the variation? And that's, that's kind of the expertise that I would bring.
Thank you. And same question to candidate Cleveland.
Sure. So to answer the first part on my experience, I've also worked at the University of Minnesota, I think for the last, so fifteen years, probably for the last ten years have been managing budgets of some sort, varying from a couple hundred thousand dollars to millions of dollars, depending on the role that I was, was part of. And so with multiple line items as well. And so I am used to working with funding and budgets and, and try to figure out what is funding that we can use for and allocate for certain programs versus what is restricted and unrestricted funding as well. So similar to this levy, right? With the levy can only be used for technology and security-related funding, right? That is the purpose of this, this funding. So, and then to answer the second question, what would I do? Clarity is really important when you're talking about money. We need to be transparent with our community and what we're spending our money on. So questions, you can never have too many questions when you're asking about funding and where the dollars are going. So it's really important to have clarity and to be transparent with that. I also have a lot of experience in fundraising. Most of the initiatives that I have funded at the University of Minnesota have been privately funded through corporate or family donations. So there is a lot of, you know, experience with that as well.
And candidate Morris Went.
Yes, so my priority, my prior, my primary expertise is in school funding and understanding school funding sources. Starting at just the elementary level in my own school, I've served on, served on our building instructional leadership team, which has to determine how to allocate the funds that we have throughout the building, whether it be for staffing or for materials or resources. But I've also served on the district finance advisory committee. So have gained an understanding of our district finances and the funding sources. But I've also done a lot of work with, following the legislature and the funding sources. And so we, you know, schools are funded through the legislature, both state and federal tax dollars, property taxes, and then of course levies. So understanding that, you know, we can't just say to our communities, we need more money, so just give us more money. We have to ask and get that approved. And that's why we need things like levies from time to time.
Okay, next question. District-wide math scores from the Minnesota Department of Education are thirty-seven point eight percent proficient and reading is forty-five point five percent proficient. What do you propose to do to raise reading and mathematics proficiency in Roseville? And I will start with Mr. Crump.
Yeah, thank you. The only way you're going to raise scores is by working with parents and with students. It's gonna, it's, the, the only way you're going to raise scores is it needs to be done basically at home. The school provides a good, a good resource for, here is how it's done and providing some, providing the guidance on going forward. But the homework needs to be done at home and that's where the kids are going to learn how to read, how to do math. And so maybe the best thing would be to set up some kind of a, and I think that we already have something like this, but some kind of a tutor relationship where you could get members from the community who, who are good at math and reading and other topics and see if you could set up some way where they would be willing to give their time to tutor kids that aren't doing as well as they could do. Because there are plenty of them that should be doing better and it has to be done at home.
Candidate Cleveland.
Sure. So a couple of things to name, I think our, our district is within a few percentage points of the state average. So although there's still a lot of work to be done, I think it is, there's a, a reason behind that, right? Right now, a lot of our students, we're living in that post-COVID time where students were impacted by learning at home, hybrid. And, and so there is still some impacts that we have to navigate through on what is that post-COVID life looks like, right? And so students were impacted through that. And so I think we must invest on evidence-based literacy and math interventions to help our students. But also we need to be culturally, culturally relevant. Every student learns a little bit differently and what's impacting them at their home and how they relate and how they've learned must be diverse, as diverse as our populations that we're working with. And so there isn't going to be a one fit for all, right? We, we need to try different approaches in order to try to, to meet the student needs and try to improve their ability to do well academically. And math and reading are fundamental to, to a lot of the, the work that they'll be as citizens in our society. So I think it's worth investment, but also I think I see a lot of progress as well.
Candidate Morris Went.
Okay, standardized tests proficiency. I think a lot of it is how are we, how are we measuring that proficiency? Most educators will tell you that the standardized tests measuring proficiency are out of date culturally and racially biased. They don't take into account neurodivergences, anxieties on test day. They don't take into account how hungry a child might be, how much sleep they got the night before. They don't take it into account language proficiency. Roseville has a third of our students, I believe, speak a different language at home. And it can take six years to fully grasp onto a, a language. So what, what, how do, what are we testing? Reading proficiency just in English? And I think another thing people don't understand is how much reading is on the math tests. There is an unbelievable amount of reading on the math tests. And if that's inaccessible to you, how are you going to show your proficiency? I will say though, I don't want to just say it's all the tests. I'm super encouraged by Roseville being an early adopter of science-based reading instruction. And I do think that we are going to see massive gains from that.
Candidate Clark.
Yeah, I will say some of the similar things that my other colleagues have mentioned before. I think it's more than just the test scores. I will say the Read Act, we had, before the state required that, we had already implemented that. So that was important to us beforehand. We have successful programs like Abbott that we put into elementary and the sixth grade and up that our students can do that. And not every student is in Abbott, but every student learns because the teachers have been trained in that. So they benefit from that, that type of instruction. I think it's also important that we've used street data, things outside of that math and reading, to look at how we can evaluate our students and making sure that they're progressing along and being successful. Someone alluded to before with the pandemic, I do think that, that there and there were some of the challenges that we have. I think our team is really strongly committed to trying to make sure that we increase that. But there are several things and I think Michelle mentioned it great about the other reasons why that standardized test scores may not be the best way that we evaluate our students. And so I'm, I feel pretty good where we're at, but we know that it's really a challenging thing. And I think, you know, we have said it's the social injustice of our time is kind of the reading and, and not having people prepared for that. So I think we're really committed to trying to make sure we do improve those scores, but make sure that the student gets some benefit from it.
Let's change up a little bit and do a lightning round. You get thirty seconds to answer this question. Cell phones. Should the Minnesota State Legislature get involved in trying to pass laws about cellphone usage in the school? Why or why not? Should the Minnesota State Legislature get involved in passing laws about cellphone usage in the schools? Why or why not? And we will start with candidate Morris Went.
I had a feeling. I haven't, to be honest, I haven't really thought about that at a legislative level. I know that different communities and different districts have had community conversations to make that decision. And I think that that's important. I'm, I, I know that the Roseville cellphone policy has seen improvement in both attendance and achievement. So I don't, I, I just have to say, I don't know if the legislature should get involved, but I am, I am pleased that communities are getting involved.
Candidate Clark.
I would say I don't know if the legislature needs to be involved. If you ask my eleventh grader, he may have a different decision than I would have. I think right now we have our students, they keep in their backpacks, they put it away during class and they can have it during passing time. And that seems to be successful versus them to be able to have it out in the classroom. So I think we have solved that. We worked closely when we had that policy with the neighboring districts and a lot of us went at the same time. So that I think really helped with people having friends around us to make sure they're. So I think most districts have resolved it on their own, so.
Candidate Crump.
Thank you. No, the state legislature should not get involved. This should be a decision made by the school board. And I would be, I would like to keep cell phones in the classroom simply because we have teachers bringing their own political beliefs into the classroom. I've heard recorded conversations that I did not like, that I don't agree with. And it's nice to know that they can be recorded and addressed that way if needed.
Candidate Cleveland.
Sure, I also leaned towards that I don't know to know because there isn't a one-fit answer for all communities and every school. The legislator would be a one-fit answer and what maybe a smaller school at a rural space needs versus a school in the city needs could be different. And so that one-fit answer might not necessarily be right. So I, I do believe it should be a community decision. And I think what, what we're doing so far in Roseville seems to be working.
Now I'll give you a long question to answer.
In thirty seconds.
In thirty, yeah.
You get your full amount of time.
Okay, okay.
In fact, you might want more for this one. Freedom of speech. On the national stage and in Minnesota, freedom of speech for students and faculty members has become an issue. What should the policies of the school board be regarding students' free speech rights? And what should the policies be regarding teachers' free speech rights? I'll read that again. On the national stage and in Minnesota, freedom of speech for students and faculty members has become an issue. has become an issue. What should the policies of the school board be regarding students' free speech rights? And what should the policies be regarding teachers' free speech rights? And I will start this time with Mr. Crump.
Thank you. So, freedom of speech, I think that, when, when it comes to freedom of speech in the school, I think that we're, the students are in school to learn, and so if they're bringing their political views into the classroom, because I'm guessing that's what this is about, is bringing political views into the classroom, why don't we keep the political stuff out of the classroom? And the, the, it's, it's disruptive to the entire, to the entire student body, so let's keep, I, I understand it's freedom of speech, but there are limitations as to, as to where you can have, where you can talk about certain topics. And I just think if we're having students and/or faculty bring political views into the classroom, I don't think it belongs there.
Candidate Morris Wendt.
Yes, okay, well, I'm a big proponent of freedom of speech. It's part of our First Amendment, and as a teacher of government and citizenship, even at the fourth grade level, we talk about those First Amendment protections. As far as political speech in the classroom, I guess that would depend on the context. For most places though, I don't see that political opinions would need to be shared in the classroom. But I do absolutely believe that teachers and professionals should have their freedom of speech protected outside of the classroom. So when they're acting as a private citizen, they should have their freedom of speech protected. As far as students, that's another, that's, that's different. I mean, we need to create safe and welcoming spaces, and I think sometimes we shy away from differing opinions just to not have it affect anything at all, and instead we should be working on civil discourse and ways to communicate productively.
Okay, candidate Clark.
I, I also concur that, I mean, I think it is a right that our teachers should have that freedom of speech. I think that, you know, we entrust them, they go through the trainings and know what's appropriate and when that really is appropriate. As it relates to the students, I also think, you know, they should have freedom of speech. I don't think we should have things that have hate speech. I think we have things that, there's certain things we don't want people to express on their shirts and things when they wear that disrupts from the classroom, disrupts from learning. Otherwise, I think we really need to look at our memory rights and allowing that in the classroom. I know there's policies around that there are certain things being taught that's part of the curriculum. Students in Minnesota, or parents in Minnesota have the right to have their students have an alternative things, and they can do that. And, and I know when my son had health, that we were sent something to talk about, hey, we're going to talk about a topic today, and if you don't want your son to, or your student to be there, you have that opportunity not to have them there to have something else. So I think we follow the laws that allows us that, but I do believe that the freedom of speech, that we should allow our teachers an license to have that.
Candidate Cleveland.
Yes, I also support the constitutional right of freedom of speech as individuals, and when we walk into a building, I don't think that changes, as long as we are keeping our conversations free of hate and free of harassment and free of bullying. And as Michelle mentioned, we learn to have conversations that are civil, because that is also an important tool to learn beyond the classroom experience, right? To be citizens in this world, especially now. And so, I, I fully support our students and teachers having freedom of speech as appropriate. For teachers, I know it can be a little bit difficult when you're teaching in the curriculum, but educators have been taught, they know what is appropriate, what age appropriate, what is within the curriculum and within the pedagogy, so, you know, as long as they are maintaining that in mind and keeping things free of hate and harassment, I think it's appropriate for folks to continue to have that constitutional right.
Okay, next question. As a school board member, how will you empower students in decision-making? As a school board member, how will you empower students in decision-making? And we will start with candidate Cleveland.
Empowerment is one of my favorite words. I think empowerment comes from feeling confident, feeling safe, feeling like you can trust the folks around you and the community around you. Decision-making can be very paralyzing if you feel fear, or you feel like there's pressure or maybe things that you can't say. And so, I think, as I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking about my children, and they're really young, right? And so, they feel a lot of anxiety about the decisions that they're making, whether it's what they're going to have for dinner or what they're going to wear for school, right? Like, but practicing that decision-making, I think is really important. And then I also think about the students that I work with at the college level, right? They're transitioning into a whole new space, and how, how are they feeling comfortable in navigating that big transition of leaving home? And that, those changes can be really paralyzing, so I think being there for the students, creating a welcoming and safe environment for them is really important, so that they feel like they can trust somebody and ask questions, have their information. And like, as I've shared before, both my kids have autism, so usually the decision-making at home is I propose a couple of, a couple of options, not too overwhelming, and then they know what, which ones, so they feel empowered in that decision that they're making. Usually, I kind of lean it towards what I want it to be, those two options, but that's just my parent hat. So, yeah, I, I think it, it's important for students to have confidence.
Candidate Morris Wendt.
Sure, I, I think I'll keep it short. I think it's just creating opportunities for them to speak to board members and soliciting their feedback too. And I'll just tell a short story that former representative Mindy Gryling told us recently about when she served on the school board and had worked really hard on an issue, and then her daughter had organized on the opposite side of the issue and showed up to the school board meeting with her friends and spoke one after another and defeated the issue that, that, that Ms. Gryling was championing and how it's a family story of theirs now. But I did say to her, I go, "Okay, but weren't you proud?" I mean, yes, even if it's an opposition, I think it's important that they have those opportunities.
Candidate Crump.
Thank you. I think when it comes to students making decisions, the first thing I think back to is when my daughter was playing, or is playing sports and that, and it probably started at about the high school age where the coaches would say, "If, if your, if your player has any problems, or if they need to miss practice, or if they need to do this or that, I want to hear from your player. I want your player to come and talk with me, the coach." And, and if they feel uncomfortable, just let them know that they can come and talk. I'm not gonna, you know, it's not going to be a, a bad environment for them to come and talk to me. But just make them deal with different issues that they have with the adult when the, when it's kind of a, when it's a comfortable environment. If you make, make them make decisions when it's possible, that will help them in the future.
Thank you. And candidate Clark.
I'm also a proponent of empowering students. Part of my master's degree is student development, and part of that is teaching students to empower themselves and to speak for themselves. We have a great opportunity here that we have kids from, you know, early childhood all the way up through twelfth grade that live with us, and they have the opportunity to tell us. Our superintendent has a student advisory board that meets there. One of the favorite things, I think of all my board colleagues will say, that when we have students that come to the board meeting and we get to ask them different things, I think is great. Roz has a, a climate group that's been to the board, and they've supported some things that we're able to support, some things we, we have not been able to, but to see the student interaction, you know, we had students, you know, that marched to City Hall the other day. I mean, it's just, that's really what we want, that's what it's all about, we want them to do it the right way. So anyways, I'm an advocate for any way that we can create opportunities for students to share with us. Sometimes we may seem scary, because I, even my son's friends, I ask him a lot, "How are things? What's going on with them?" If you ask them the right question, they'll tell you all the things you need to know, that you want to know, what they like and don't like, whether it's about the buses or about food, whatever it is. So I think you just really, we just get that feedback so that we can just do better by them. I mean, we are here to really support them, so, yeah.
Okay. Long question now. Our commitment to equity and quality education is reinforced by our equity vision, which states that Roseville area schools is committed to ensuring an equitable and respectful learning environment for every student, family, and staff member regardless of race, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, ability, home or first language, religion, national origin, age, and physical appearance. That is part of the school board policy right now. I will repeat, because there's a lot there. Our commitment to equity and quality education is reinforced by our equity vision, which states that Roseville area schools is committed to ensuring an equitable and respectable, respectful learning environment for every student, family, and staff member regardless of race, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, ability, home or first language, religion, national origin, age, and physical appearance. What actions would you take as a school member to support, change, or rescind this policy statement? And I will start with candidate Clark.
Well, I am very supportive of the statement, so I would never intend extending it. I, I think it's important, as the statement says, we want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to be successful. And when we think about that equity vision, keep in mind, we do things in this building that may be not student, not K-12 focused, there may be seniors and other people that do that. We don't really care. I think we need to be open to everyone and to make sure everyone has opportunities to be successful, no matter what it is. If there's other additional things we need to provide for them because it makes them there, everybody doesn't start at the same place. Our goal is to make sure that they're successful at the end. So I, I'm a very big proponent of our equity vision, and whatever we can do to live that every day, so, because all those identities that we list there are in our district, and we need to make sure those people feel supported no matter where they fall there. And I've, I will champion that to the end and say, that's really part of my passion, is to make sure that everybody feels supported, whether they look like me or don't look like me, whether they have the abilities I have or don't have the abilities I have. I just think it's important for us to live that equity vision.
Candidate Cleveland.
Yeah, I have been an equity and inclusion practitioner in higher education for over fifteen years. So, to me, this equity vision is really important, and as a parent, I've seen it lived out as a resident, as a, you know, community member in Roseville, and this is one of the reasons why I decided to run for school board, because I love this equity vision. I think it's, it's great, and I see it in every aspect of my interactions as a parent with this school board. There are a lot of descriptors on here, and if I could even add one more, would be immigration status. I think we need to call out, especially in the current climate and the fears that our students are, are facing, that we would add that regardless of immigration status, students deserve that right of education.
Candidate Morris Wendt.
Sure, a lot of districts have an equity vision or an equity statement, but what I have experienced as a parent in this district is it is authentic and it is lived out. I know where this district stands on welcoming all different types of backgrounds and identities. I know that my family is welcome, that my children, who have two moms, are welcome in classrooms, included, supported, there's no question. And I think that's one of the most critical things, is that our community, our diverse community is represented in their curriculums, it's, they are represented in their libraries. They are not spoken about, like they are an unspeakable, they should not be stigmatized, and they need to be reflected in our teachers and support staff as well. So as far as, you know, strategies, policies, continuing to make sure that we are attracting a diverse workforce, as well as diverse curriculums and media.
Candidate Crump.
Yeah, thank you. So, is it equity at the starting line, or is it equity at the finish line? Everybody wants fairness. But I will say, boys are boys, girls are girls. That's the way God made people. There are only two genders. Let's be honest with kids. Teenage years are tough years, but let's, let's help them get through it. And if their, if their parents are having difficulty talking about it, maybe we need to figure out a way that we can help the parents talk about it, but there are only two genders. Let's be honest with the kids about that, help them get through it in the best way possible. Everybody wants fairness, like I said. I've, I've been involved with activities, sporting activities. I haven't seen at all any racism. I, I, I know it exists, I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but I haven't seen, the kids don't care what color you are, the kids don't care about anything else. The parents that I've interacted with, they don't care about anything like that. Not saying it doesn't exist, I'm just saying I don't see it as a huge problem in our society today.
Next question about curriculum. There is need for improvement in math and reading, but what policies should be implemented with regard to resources for visual arts, music, physical education, athletics, industrial arts, career training, and extracurricular activities? I'll read that one more time. With the need for improvement in math and reading, what policies should be implemented with regard to resources for visual arts, music, physical education, athletics, industrial arts, career training, and extracurricular activities? And I will start with candidate Morris Wendt.
What was just the beginning of that question?
Pardon me?
Just the beginning of the question.
The beginning?
Yeah, after, before you list all of the things.
Because of course I don't have it written out, and I've been changing it as. You're putting me on the spot, which is totally fair, but I believe that the first part was about the need for improvement in reading and math, the core curriculum of reading and math. We know those need to be improved, but with that need in mind, what policy should implement with regard to resources for all of these other areas of curriculum? Does that make sense?
Sure, well, I'm going to answer it.
All right. What a great panel. This guy's great.
That was, because that was a, that was a wide variety of curricular areas. The first things that stood out to me were visual arts, music. Again, I'm going to go back to that, has to be reflective of our, of our community. It has, we have to, we have to know our students, we have to know where they're coming from, and we have to be engaging them in ways that they are familiar and exposing others to what their classmates and community members are also experiencing. As far as can, career training, policies, implement resources, I guess I'll just go back to again, the high school, some of the things, they, you know, I don't know how many of you know this, they have like a mechanical area that can fit full six, or six full-sized cars in the high school to learn about that. There's three, I think, industrial kitchens that I would just love to spend some time in. The, there's a small repairs class, there is a screen printing class, like, just ensuring we have multiple pathways to success.
Candidate Crump.
Yeah, thank you. So, I agree with a lot of that. I think, I think Roseville does a good job of providing activities for kids. We can always do, always do better. Maybe we have searched the community for volunteers that would be willing to engage kids with, with, I'm just going through this, with like art and music, and in addition to classroom time, because if you have a kid who really likes playing music, let's see if we can hook them up with somebody who can give them lessons and, and that kind of stuff. And the career training one, I, I think that's, I think that's kind of a big deal for Roseville, for, for high schools, in that, I mentioned earlier, that I think artificial intelligence is creeping up on us a lot faster than what we are giving it credit for. is creeping up on us a lot faster than what we are giving it credit for. And I think that it would be great if the, if the high school would have some kind of, lead a community discussion, maybe, maybe it's like once a year, maybe once every, or maybe twice a year, but lead a community discussion and, and kind of talk about what kind of jobs are going to be available, what kind of debt are you going into, and what kind of, what are you going to be competing with, with artificial intelligence, so that kids can make a good, informed decision as to where they're headed.
Okay, candidate Clark.
I also would think it's a good thing, how I understand the questions. Part of the thing is, I was at a presentation recently, and they talked about why some kids come to school. Some of the things I think we listed are why they may come to school, and why they're there, then we can get them with the math and reading. You know, if they're playing a sport, and they know they have to keep a certain GPA to play that sport, that may be important to them. So making that connection, I think, is important. If they're coming there, and the theater person who's directing the show shows interest in them, they may keep coming back to school. So that attendance, what we talked about earlier, that's a nice way, I think, to make those connections. We have wonderful CTE spaces, much like Michelle mentioned. We also can take advantage of District 916 also has a lot of health things. You can graduate from there with a CNA before they even graduate high school, and they can go out in the, in the workforce, or wear cosmetology, the basics for that. So there's a lot of things, I think, that we do that connects students, as much like having that best friend at work that they talk about in the employment sector. Really, if there's people who show they care, and sometimes those are people outside of the normal day, and that's really where they connect, and why they want to keep coming back to school that next day, to, to those other connections. So I think it's important that we support that.
And candidate Cleveland.
Yeah, to answer the question around policies that support resources, I think it's important for us to offer a robust amount of opportunities for young students to figure out what brings them joy, what they like doing, whether that is visual arts, or athletics, or, you know, variety of different things. As a young human, this is a time where you explore and try different things, right, and figure out what you like. And so the more we can offer those resources for our students to figure out what, what their purpose is in life or not, right? Equally as important to find out, I was not really good at this art thing, I'm gonna try this something different. This is the time and opportunity for, for folks to figure out what brings them joy and what they're about. And so I would definitely support any sort of policy that would give those resources for exploration and figure out who they are as people.
Okay. Last question that we're going to have time for. Curriculum concerns, parental concerns. As a school board member, how would you respond to a parent's objections about what is taught in the classroom, or what is available in the library? We'll start with candidate Clark.
I'm a current school board member, and we've had, I've had this, this happen. I believe, part of the thing is, I mentioned before, the Minnesota law allows for certain subjects, that the student doesn't want to be there because the parent does not want them to be there, that they have that opportunity not to be there on that class, or to have an alternative instruction. I am a supporter of, we need to have the books in the library that reflect everyone. So I believe that whatever book is there, should be there. If it's different views than someone else, they don't have to look at that book. That's not their thing, but I don't believe that we should limit the books in our libraries. I also want to make sure that our students and our teachers can teach what should be taught in our classrooms about the way history was. I don't believe we should not sugarcoat and make things that happen, believe it doesn't happen. So I guess I'm an advocate for that, I think. Hopefully, that's about it. I don't have much.
Candidate Crump.
Yeah, thank you. So I tend, I tend to think that the curriculum is, is pretty good at Roseville with, with what my daughter and stepson have went through. Everything seems pretty good. I've been happy with it. There are some things that, probably the one concern that I have is I think that in the library, they probably have some books that I don't really think should be there. We're talking about high school, we're talking about middle school. I'm not talking about banning books, because banning, you can still get it, it's on Amazon. I'm saying, we don't have to have everything in the school library. I wish I could think of the name of the book, and I can't, but there are some books that we should make sure that don't go into the library.
And next candidate Cleveland.
Sure. I think parents play a vital role in our students' academic success, and yet, at the same time, I think it's important to know that, and recognize that our educators are trained in child development and curriculum design, and they should be entrusted with the responsibility of what is in the curriculum, and what is age-appropriate for our children. And I think Manix mentioned some of the opportunities that parents have to, to have those conversations with the educators if they don't agree. I also think, related to books, if we do ban books, it actually, research has shown that it actually hinders our students' learning outcomes, because they're being reduced to the exposure of different perspectives, or also not seeing themselves reflected in the stories that are being shared in those books. And so in addition to that, it can also shift their critical thinking skills. So having different perspectives and learning about different stories is really important, and this is the opportunity to do that when they're young, buy books, because they're not out in the world quite yet, and so this is what opens up their mind to those opportunities.
And we'll end with candidate Morris Wint.
Yeah, so I'm gonna go back to my goal of public schools, is to create an educated society that is college and career-ready upon graduation, and ready to contribute positively to their communities. And we really cannot do that without giving them a robust education that includes the facts of our history. And when we're talking about libraries, you know, it's not just this collection of books. It's a reflection of who we are as a society. I know for myself, I, I take my own classroom library very seriously. It's essential that my students see themselves represented in the literature that they're reading. Because ultimately, when we're talking about what books, to include in a library, we're talking about what we value as a society, and who we value as a society. And I grew up in suburban Shoreview, and I was not reflected in books. As someone who would grow up to marry another woman, I was not reflected in books. I was not reflected in media. I wasn't even reflected in my daily suburban life. I didn't know anybody that was like me. And that told me that I did, my parents are here, it's okay, you did a great job. That, but that tells you that you don't hold a lot of value. When you can't see yourself, it doesn't, you don't hold a lot of value. So in addition to providing windows to other worlds, books provide mirrors to ourselves, and we cannot be what we cannot see. So I deserve to be represented in my culture. My children deserve to see their family in books and media. My students deserve to see themselves represented in books. Representation matters, and a library needs to represent, reflect, and celebrate the whole community, no exceptions.
Okay. Now it is time for closing statements. Each of our candidates will get two minutes to give a closing statement. This is a different random order than we began with. So the first person to give the closing statement will be candidate Morris Wint.
Okay. Well, I've had a blast here. I really enjoyed this. You probably are like, but I have. So some like to paint schools as solely buildings with which to teach reading, writing, and math. But as a lifelong educator, I know that it is only when all of the basic needs a person has are met, that we can foster a conducive learning environment, where students can focus on their desire for knowledge, understanding, curiosity, and meaning. School policies that ensure that students have access to nutritious food, hydration, feel safe, feel secure, feel included, access to physical and mental health services, feel a sense of belonging, a sense of dignity, and a wide variety of paths to achievement and success, have to be prioritized equally alongside academic learning in order to achieve academic excellence. Academic excellence means that graduates are college and career-ready, and students show proficiency on grade-level standards. To achieve it, we'd need both quality educators and curriculum, as well as a healthy, safe, equitable, and respectful learning environments. I'm continually impressed by the knowledge, skill, talent, and commitment Roseville teachers and staff lead with, and I want to ensure that Roseville continues to attract the best of the best. We would choose Roseville again and again, and I hope you'll choose me, the teacher, to represent you, as well as my co-candidates. We would also appreciate your support, and we, we are running together, some of us. We would appreciate your support in following us on social media, sharing our information with your networks, ordering a sign, donating if able, volunteering to Canvas, and of course, voting on or before November 4th.
Next closing statement by candidate Cleveland.
Thank you all for your time, and thank you again to the League of Women Voters for having this platform for us, and thank you all for coming on this really stormy, rainy night. It really shows your commitment to our schools, so thank you for, for being here. So as we look ahead to the future of Roseville Area School District, I ask that you imagine a community where every student, regardless of their background, ability, or identity, feels seen, supported, and empowered to thrive. I'm running for school board because I believe in that future. I believe in the power of inclusive education to change lives, because it has changed mine. And I lived the experience of being an outsider in a new environment as an immigrant. The, I lived the experience of a parent navigating special education, and I've also lived the joy of watching my children grow in classrooms that celebrate their strengths. I bring this, to this role, not just my professional expertise, but my personal commitment. I spend my career building systems that work for every learner, and I'm ready to continue to do that here in Roseville. Together, we can build a school district that reflects the values of equity, compassion, and community, where educators are supported, families are heard, and students are the center of every decision. So again, I am Heather Cleveland, and I hope to earn your vote and your trust in the upcoming election. Early voting starts tomorrow, so you can start doing that soon, and I hope that together we can build a future where every child has the opportunity to thrive. To learn more about my background and my priorities, please visit heathercleveland.com, or follow our socia's on Facebook. We are E equals M C squared, and I hope that on election day, you elect Morris Wint, Cleveland, and Clark. Thank you.
Next candidate Crump.
Thank you. So I'm kind of the oddball out here, and I can, I can remember for, for the past many, many years, I voted Republican. And I'm not going to win this election with only Republican votes. I'm appealing to the Democrat voter from 20 years ago, from 30 years ago, who feels like the Democrat Party has left them. One of the most interesting conversations I had was two years ago, when I talked to a lady, she was probably about 80 years old. She was very concerned. She had voted Democrat for her entire life, her and her husband. Voted Democrat her entire life. We didn't agree on anything in regards to national politics or state politics, but we agreed about everything regarding the school board. She was very concerned with her kid, with her grandkids at this point, and being taught that there are more than two genders. She was very concerned with some of the books that were getting into the library. People are concerned about this, and I'm appealing to that Democrat from 20, 30 years ago, who feels like the Democrat Party has left them. I'd appreciate, appreciate your vote. Thank you very much.
And last, but certainly not least, candidate Clark.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank everybody in the audience here and watching online for taking the time to learn about us. Thank my fellow candidates for willing to run for school board, because that's an important thing to do. Thank the League of Women Voters, and thank Susan for moderating. Serving on the Roseville Area School Board has been an honor for me, and I'm proud of the progress that we've made. But there's more work ahead. I bring experience on serving on the board as a member and a treasurer, the perspective of a parent of a child in our schools, a deep commitment to equity, fiscal responsibility, and student success. I believe in listening and building trust with our community, and making thoughtful decisions that keep students at the center. I will be grateful for your support and vote, and you can continue to work to make sure every student has the opportunity they deserve. The three of us are running together, because we have, we're like-minded. We may come from different backgrounds and look different, but our vision really for our schools is that we include everyone, and we want everyone to be successful. I spend time out, no matter if I'm at a soccer game, a football game, if I can meet with people who have the same beliefs as me, I will talk to them if they're different. Because really, our goal is to make sure our, our schools are great for all of our students, and all of our staff, as well as all the other things that we do for our community. We do other things outside of the K-12 things, too, all the things that happen in this building as well. So we really want to be there to support you, so thank you once again for coming tonight, and I appreciate it.
To close our program, first of all, I want to apologize if I didn't get to your specific question. There were lots of questions, and we tried to cover a vast array of topics during this forum. If you have further questions, please contact your candidates. I'm sure they would be delighted to talk with you after the forum is over, or any other time. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would like to thank the candidates. They're serving our community by standing up and running for election. That takes time. It takes energy. It takes a lot of guts. So thank you for doing that. I would like to thank the many League of Women Voters who have helped sponsor this and other forums. Takes a lot of work, a lot of planning, a lot of preparation, and a lot of volunteers. Thank you to the camera crew and the facility crew who have made this program possible. This program can be viewed on the League of Women Voters Roseville YouTube channel, as well as the Roseville Area School YouTube channel. So people who have not been able to be here in person, or if you want to review this amazing program, it's available to you. Every vote counts. This year, Election Day is November 5th. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. You can vote early in person, you can vote by mail, or vote in person on Election Day. For any questions on how or where to vote, you can go to the Ramsey County website and visit the Elections and Voting section. Participation is the key to democracy. You as voters are the most important part of our democracy. Vote. Make a difference. Thank you. November 4th. I'm sorry. One more mistake. November 4th. Thank you, and good evening.